Hello, welcome to our 2020 election forum series organized by Florida Today, Eastern Florida State College, and the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast. And today you're going to meet two candidates running for Brevard County Commission District 5. It covers South Brevard, including parts of Melbourne, Palm Bay, and West Melbourne, as well as Indian Atlantic and parts of unincorporated Brevard County. I am Isadora Rangel. I am Florida Today's opinion and engagement editor, and I will be your host during this forum. This forum should last roughly 56 minutes. And there are two candidates, like I said, on the November 3 ballot running in District 5. They are the incumbents Christine Isnardi, who is a Republican, and Democrat William Capote, who is the mayor of Palm Bay. Welcome candidates.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with me. And each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer my questions. And they also get a 30-second rebuttal if necessary. And now we will begin with our opening statements. Again, they have a minute and a half to do that. And Commissioner Isnardi, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. Thank you. And I want to thank you, Isadora, Eastern Florida State College, League of Women Voters, and Eastern Florida for hosting this debate or this forum. I'm Christine Isnardi, a full-time mom and the current elected District 5 Commissioner. I'm also a part-time nurse practitioner, and I've been a resident of Palm Bay since 1999. And I understand that times are rough. And I'm running for county commission for reelection because I want to continue to be that advocate for families and for our seniors. And I'll continue to bring that common sense leadership that our commission needs, and working responsibly to balance our budget without asking our taxpayers to pay more, be an advocate for jobs so families can safely get back to work. And I'll work hard to support projects that promote the health of our Indian River Lagoon. And as a commissioner and practitioner, I've had the unique and privilege of working on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I think I bring that awesome perspective to our commission. And I know how to collaborate with municipalities and local governments to get things done, help our families, and finding that balance between protecting our health and our economic prosperity. And I'll continue to serve with honest, ethical, and principled leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's hear from Palm Bay Mayor William Capote.
Okay, I would like to thank the Florida Today, the League of Women Voters, and Eastern Florida State College for allowing us to get our message out today. I have served the city of Palm Bay. I'm Mayor William Capote. I've served the city of Palm Bay as a councilman from '08 to 2012. I've served from 2012 to today, 2020, this year 2020 as your mayor. I look forward and I'm very passionate about being representing District 5, continuing to meet Brevard's emerging priorities and challenges. Priorities are the Indian River Lagoon infrastructure, the NASA space program, drive that to move tourism, to bring jobs into the area. I think that NASA is a key component to the engine of Brevard County. I'm passionate about working with young people, helping the elderly. As my record shows here in the city of Palm Bay, I've been involved from day one in my community. And all I have to say is I'm going to be that type of person that could cross party lines and make things happen. Because we need things done in this community to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have obviously a lot of ground to cover. But I want to begin with the COVID-19 pandemic. Obviously, that is a huge issue in Brevard and across the nation and the world. So my first question is that some experts have warned that we could experience a second wave of COVID-19 infections, and things could worsen this fall when COVID meets the flu season. What would you do to be prepared this fall to keep Brevard residents safe? And were there any lessons learned from the spring and summer surge? And Mayor Capote, why don't we start with you?
Okay, I can handle that. I think that the pandemic was something that's not like a hurricane. It's like anything. You could be a Monday night quarterback. I could criticize the commission for the job they did. But the reality is, it was the first of its kind. But there were some miscommunications. There was a lot of non-communication that was not happening with the public, not like other counties were doing. I think they could have done a better job with that, a better job in communicating with the communities and letting us know exactly that we are the stakeholders. I know that they have the bigger picture, and that's what I'm going to represent in District 5. But you have to have an open line of communication with all the municipalities. I know the city managers were involved. I know that there has to be a better job done through the emergency management. I know that's going through some kind of transition. But the Space Coast League of Cities is also trying to communicate and trying to let the commissioners know that let us be part of the conversation. It shouldn't be directed to just one individual.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I mean myself. Yeah, definitely. I mean, there's always lessons to be learned. And you know, everybody can definitely make better efforts at communication. I think I was the biggest advocate of that right from the beginning. Ultimately, it's up to our leaders to make sure that those messages are getting out. I think we did the best with what we had. And we, again, learned from our errors. But immediately, we definitely communicated with all municipalities. We were getting things out on social media. We were working really hard to make sure we were keeping our residents safe. And we're working hard within the EOC to make sure that messaging is clear to our residents. Because it is unlike anything we've ever seen. And I think that we've made great efforts and we've done a very good job of making sure we communicate what we need from the municipalities and also what we can do as better leaders to communicate that message to our residents. So I think, again, we need to make sure our hospitals are prepared and our hospitals stepped up to the challenge and they were ready. So I would just, you know, encourage not just leaders. You know, my opponent is also, you know, a leader in his own community, and we didn't hear anything from him at all. And instead, he chose to blame his manager for not conveying a message when people were scared and they needed that message to come from their leaders. And we had somebody on our EOC board that made sure that they were communicating daily with the public to try to reassure residents that no matter what we did, we could try to make people safe.
Thank you. Mayor Capote, would you like a rebuttal for that?
The rebuttal is that when you look from the outside in and you talk about the city manager that we let go, there were some flaws in the way she was communicating to council and communicating with our community, and we needed to make a decision. And sometimes when you're looking from the outside, you take words of criticism towards that person. But the reality is, is that if you're not in that person's shoes, you don't know the decision you made.
Okay. And I still want to talk more about COVID-19. But I want to talk also about CARES Act. As if you are not familiar with it, the county has received, I believe, more than $100 million from Congress in relief for the pandemic. And among the county's allocations are grants to small businesses and nonprofits, grants for individuals hurting financially because of COVID-19, as well as help for food pantries, food banks, and other entities. So my question to the candidates is, would you change how that money is being distributed if you could start over? And how do you think the county has done in allocating these funds? And Commissioner Isnardi, we'll start with you.
I think definitely we've stepped up to the challenge. In fact, I'm the one that led the charge to make sure that over $4 million immediately would go for individual assistance to help with rent and to help with income losses due to job loss. We've allocated over $10 million to small businesses to help them with relief. We've done $4 million in food stability, which helped stock our pantries and made sure that we got meals to people that needed it. And there's so much money, and the guidelines are so strict on how we can spend that money. And if we don't do it properly, as the federal government requires us to, they will draw back that money. And ultimately, it will not just hurt us as a government. It could hurt residents because our services will go down. So we have to make sure we do this properly. Because anytime taxpayer money is being distributed, it needs to do, we need to do it smartly, we need to do it fairly, and with appropriate accountability. So again, that 4.4 million was just a start. And our staff knows to come back to us immediately if the requirement is more from our residents. But we're definitely up to the challenge. And we definitely want to make sure we get those monies into the hands of the people that need it the most.
Mayor Capote?
Okay, from my standpoint, as the CARE Act was being unveiled, there was a lot of communication that was being given that the cities would be receiving the monies directly. From my perspective, is the county received the money because of the populations of the city. And the city of Palm Bay happens to be one of the largest cities. We have our own HUD program that we run. And I figured that certain monies of that CARE Act would have came directly to the cities that could do their own distribution. Because the county is looking for a bigger picture. But you could have gotten the cities more engaged by allowing the cities to receive some fundings. I know that there were some fellow mayors that felt strongly about receiving the monies directly. But the county made the decision to do it on their own. And basically, I think that there could have been more partnership in those views.
Can I get a rebuttal, please?
Yes, 30 seconds.
That is absolutely false. We reached out to the cities immediately and asked them what their needs would be. And this money is available to all residents within the county. And we didn't set up the rules. The federal government did. So if cities or municipalities had issue with how that money was to be distributed, we didn't hoard it all. We didn't ask for it all. This is how the federal government program was implemented. So we definitely reached out to municipalities and asked how we could help.
Thank you. And this, I believe, came up. I think, Mayor Capote, I believe you brought this up. But this is actually on my list of questions. What is your opinion on the proposal to transfer emergency service management to the sheriff's office? My understanding is that there's still more information to come out of it. But based on what you've seen so far, how are you feeling about this proposal? And Mayor Capote, I'll begin with you.
I was fine with the structure that was there. Because you have to have extra opinion. I think that Chief Sheriff Ivy's strength is policing, okay? The emergency management is a totally different beast, especially with the pandemic. When I talk about hurricane, we talked about pandemic. So you needed people that are medical experts giving information to the public. I don't think that that is a venue or something that would be giving to the sheriff's department to take over. I haven't talked to the sheriff about this. I know that the last time we were at a Zoom meeting, I gave my opinion. And I know that there's plenty of mayors and council people out there in the county that feel the same way. I'm not the only one. I think there's a better way to get it done than to give it to the sheriff when the sheriff has other things that he's responsible.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I think part of the misconception with handing over emergency operations, and I think we just saw an example of that, is that it would only be the administration of it. It wouldn't be any policy setting. It wouldn't have anything to do with that at all. The sheriff would just be responsible on messaging, responsible for day-to-day operations. The important decisions, the policy decisions would be left up to the county commission. And we even increased the size, at least the proposal is to increase the size of the emergency operations board to include more municipalities and to include more members so we could all have input from our surrounding cities. So it actually would probably broaden that scope. And I think it would be beneficial for all. But as far as the proposal goes, we've only ever talked about the administration of the day-to-day operations with the EOC with, you know, policy decisions being left up to our board and up to the policy board. So I mean, again, I think that there is a lot of misinformation out there about this sheriff taking over the EOC.
Thank you. And still, on the topic of COVID-19, Governor Ron DeSantis declared last week Florida would be entering Phase 3 in reopening the state. That means restaurants, bars, and gyms can reopen under full capacity, and the local governments can resume in-person meetings. I would like to hear your opinion about this. Do you believe the governor's timing was correct? Or should we have waited longer to reopen? And Mayor Capote, I believe it's your turn to go first.
Okay. I think that the decision was made too quickly. There is flu season is coming in. People are still getting tested, getting sick. People are passing away. I don't agree with the 100% capacity. This is, it's just like the last time. We opened the bars, bars closed back in, closed back up. This is just a waiting, a problem waiting to come again. So I would have waited a little longer. As you could tell, last night, we received notification that the virtual meetings will be extended until November 1. The Phase 3 was activated. But the discussion of whether government could meet virtually was not discussed until the order came last night that the governor suspended it for a month. So there's still decisions being made that people become unsure if they're correct or not.
Commissioner?
I don't know if it was too haste a decision. You know, I guess only time will tell. But again, I think we're dealing with something that we've never dealt with before. We have started to flatten the curve. We didn't have the millions of deaths that we anticipated. But I think we have to give some credit and put some faith back in our businesses to make sure that they're opening safely. I see a lot of businesses with signs on the door that, you know, encourage or even require face masks. And I see a lot of places still, even after the government order came down, that are still, you know, honoring the social distancing, that are still doing things that they needed to do to stay in place. Because we have to find that balance. We have to make sure that we have a strong economy. Because if people aren't working, they're not able to feed their families. And that's something I've been able to see on both fronts. So I think we have to be cautious as we move forward, definitely for sure. But again, I think we have to take it day by day and have faith in our residents, have faith in our businesses that we're making the best decisions we can for our economy and for our communities.
Thank you. I want to dig a little deeper now into District 5. And the next question is very simple. What are the biggest issues in District 5? And how would you like to address them if elected or reelected? And Commissioner, if you can go first.
I think some of our biggest issues is obviously jobs. And we need to make sure that we continue to provide an environment that's friendly for our economy, especially as we're coming back from the shutdown. And there's a lot more that needs to be done to get folks back to work. And I think part of that is our growth in transportation. We need to continue to make sure we're investing in our infrastructure like we're doing. I mean, we've done some of the biggest investments that District 5 has seen in the last three and a half years than the previous 10. So I've worked hard to expand public transportation because we understand and we empathize with our residents. 70% of our people that ride the bus are going to work. So I'm proud that that's been an effort that we've been able to spearhead in our office to add, you know, bus lines and para-transport units for our seniors. And those are the priorities for me. Obviously, public safety is always going to be at the top of that list as well. But those are our biggest issues, to make sure that we have a thriving economy and making sure that we keep people working.
Mayor Capote?
I would agree. I would agree. Infrastructure is one of, public safety, transportation are the key things that I'm passionate about in helping with District 5. I think that District 5 has an upside through the roof. We, you're talking the Parkway, you're coming through West Melbourne, Palm Bay, the Ellis Road connection to the airport. So there's a lot of variables to make South Brevard, this area of South Brevard, a beacon for the county. And working together with all the other commissioners, we can make that vision come together for the whole entire county. And that's the priority at hand. Infrastructure, because we know that some of the county roads, they need to be addressed. But if we continue to push job growth and tourism and the NASA program, we could get that vision there.
Thank you. And now I want to talk about the FBI and FTL investigation into Palm Bay. And I would like to ask separate questions for each candidate. So I'll start the question again. This investigation ended with racketeering and other charges brought against two political players in Palm Bay, including Commissioner Isnardi's former husband, who used to be the city's deputy city manager. I want to make sure, for the record, that neither of you were ever charged with any crimes. Again, I want to make that clear. However, both your names, along with the names of several other Brevard politicians, were mentioned in public records related to this case. So Mayor Capote, I would like to ask you the following question. Those documents mention allegations that you received kickbacks from Thrifty Grocery Store and that Jose Aguirre, one of the men charged in this case, controlled your votes on the Palm Bay City Council. Again, these are allegations, but they are public record. Could you please address them and their accuracy?
There is nothing to address because the allegations were false. Because if there was anything to it, it would have, an investigation or an arrest would have been made. I can't help that people always have my name on the tip of their tongue and try to accuse me of things. I just try to do my job to the best of my ability. I don't think that that becomes who I am. Everybody knows somebody. And you can't control what other people do. So at the end of the day, that's basically what I have to say is, like you said, it's just allegations. It's not true.
Thank you. And Commissioner Isnardi, there are dozens of pages reporting alleged actions by your former husband. I would like for you, could you clear the air on what you knew about your ex-husband's alleged dealings in the city of Palm Bay? And for the record, for those who aren't following this, he's still awaiting trial. I would like to make that clear as well.
And that's the danger of commenting on that very question. And, you know, because there is a pending case and because he is the father of my children, he may be my ex-husband, but he's most certainly not my enemy. So I don't think it's fair to him or his case or to the father of my children to comment on his case.
Okay.
I truly wish I could give you-
The reality is, this has nothing to do-
Because it has to do with my job on Brevard County.
Right.
Okay, let me, let's just not make this a back and forth.
Oh, no, no, we're not going back and forth. I'm just saying that.
But I do, I'm going to ask a follow-up question. And this applies to both of you, that with the upheaval and charges brought by this investigation and the fact that your names were mentioned or people very close to you were involved in this case, how do you assure voters that they can trust you to act on their best interest? And Commissioner Isnardi, I'll let you go first on this one.
Okay. I mean, I think my track record speaks for itself. And, you know, being mentioned in the report certainly doesn't make you guilty of anything. Because you know they probably looked hardest at me because of my relationship. So all I can say is that I've lived my life with ethical leadership. And I'm a good mom, I'm a good community advocate, and I'm very proud of the work I've done, not just within the community, but as a nurse practitioner and as a mother. So I hope people have as much faith in me as I have in myself. Because I can promise you that it's the real deal when you're dealing with me, so.
Thank you, Mayor Capote.
Oh, okay. If there was any indication that the public wouldn't support me, I would not run. And that's not why my constituents and my supporters, they understood everything that was going on. And I feel confident that they will still vote for me. Because I've conducted myself with integrity and transparency. I cannot help what people say. If you have an understanding of politics, you're going to have foes and you're going to have friends. And your foes tend to elevate the discussion to their benefit. So I'm okay with the people that are going to vote for me. I think that they know that I'm a proven and dedicated leader.
Thank you. And you both served together for several years on the Palm Bay City Council. So I'm curious to know, what did you think of your opponent then? And how has your opinion about them changed since those times many years ago? And Mayor Capote, I'll let you go first.
I guess we're in the same boat. We're in the same boat, arriving at the same place at a different terminal. We ran against each other in 2007. I remember Christine then. And when we worked together, as a matter of fact, on city council, we have different styles of leadership. But at the end of the day, when we voted for certain things in the city, we voted together on certain developments. So I understand her thought process, like I believe she understands how I operate. This is about offering the community two different sets of beliefs. And you choose the one that perfectly comes closer to what your belief system is. And I'm okay with that. I'm not going to go and do anything else but what I've done for the city of Palm Bay. And I know that people stopped me at the supermarket and other places to tell me that they're proud of the job that I've done for the city. Beyond all the negativity, they're still proud of the job I've done for the city, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yeah, it's been a long time since we shared a dais. But we had an election in 2007. And I believe Mayor Capote eventually won a race in 2008, I believe, when he joined me on the council. But we always were respectful of one another. We do have different leadership styles. I'm pretty proud of the work that I've done here. And so I guess, you know, as much as we may see differences as far as, you know, ideological differences, you know, one thing that I pride myself in, and up until Mayor Capote decided to run for this seat, is I used to go to his council and give updates. Because that was part of my job as a commissioner, having Palm Bay as part of my area and having been a resident of Palm Bay. And, you know, the whole three and a half years I've been at the county commission, I've not heard a word from Mayor Capote. So if he didn't like the job I was doing, or if he wasn't, or if he was upset with decisions I was making, or if he thought he could do the job better, or he wanted to have some input, I would have loved that input. I have an open door. And I work with municipalities and other mayors and other council members all over the county, not just within my district, to get, you know, mutual projects done and to handle constituent issues. So I would have liked to have heard from him because he probably could have had some valuable input.
Mayor Capote, would you like to say anything about that?
I mean, at the beginning, we communicated. But, you know, just like anything, politics steps in and lack of communication starts happening. But at the end of the day, it's about two different philosophies. It's like anything. I want to bring my experience to the table. Christine is bringing hers as a sitting commissioner. So basically, I'm just going to let the voters decide.
Okay. And I believe you both brought up different political philosophies. I would like to ask you, what is your political ideology or philosophy? And how much is that a factor when you're making decisions on behalf of your constituents? How would you define yourself and how much of that becomes a factor? And Commissioner Isnardi, I'll ask you to go first.
I don't know if I have a political philosophy. You know, I've worked across the aisle multiple times with sitting council members, right, and Mayor Capote's, right from his dais. So I don't, you know, I try not to take that to my local decision-making. Of course, I'm a principled, liberty-minded conservative. I'm always going to try to protect people's rights. I understand that we need to limit government instead of grow it. I mean, I'm a fiscal conservative. But I also understand that in order to get things done, you need to work together. And I'm proud of the work I've done, working with local, you know, democratic activists even, just to increase our bus transportation, to work on projects that benefit the whole community. Because I don't think a lot of the decisions we make are hyper-partisan. But obviously, some of the fiscal decisions and some of the priorities that we set, definitely, you know, maybe ideologically plays in. But as in the good friend of my Democratic friend Kendall Moore always said, you follow the philosophy of Christine Isnardi. Because people always say that they can't quite put me in a box, but.
Mayor Capote?
I guess I fall under the same jurisdiction of regards that I consider myself a moderate. I think that I've proven that I could work across the aisle. I've worked with various mayors and city council members in this county. I've taken on the leadership of the Space Coast League as president and conducted myself honorably. It's just, when it comes to making some decisions even within council, when you say fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative, you also have to account to the needs of the residents and also the needs of the employees. I believe that we went through the Great Recession's making decisions here that if we didn't vote for a balanced budget, there would have been a lot of people more furloughed or fired or let go. And those were tough decisions during that time. And I'm proud of the decisions that I made then and supporting our public safety officers, our police and fire. There was enormous attacks on them. And I thought that we could stay the course and the economy would recover. Sometimes you cannot hit the panic button in certain instances. You've got to do the right thing. Because these people, they need their job too.
And one of the biggest jobs of a commissioner is to pass a budget. So my next couple of questions will be about that. As you know, local governments everywhere are bracing for budget shortfalls because of the coronavirus pandemic. What are your priorities in the budget and what should be on the chopping block first? And Mayor Capote, you go first. What are your priorities in the budget and what should be on the chopping block first? And Mayor Capote, you go first.
I have to look at the, as I come in, and I know it's gonna start into the next year because the budget is, I'll be sitting down with their county manager and, and staff and getting into full-blown discussions, just like I've done here. I think that when you talk about budget and, and making the budget, budget happen, there is a philosophy of needs and wants. And I'm gonna take a look at that. Because it's not like I'm not fiscally responsible. I am. But I also have some common sense to my leadership on certain things that we shouldn't be destroying because it kills the function of the municipality or the county. So you have to have an open dialogue with your staff and, and sit down and, and see where, where are you, where do you wanna lead us to? And then as policymakers, we could tell you, this is what I'm looking for. So right now, saying what I would like or what I'd like, until I see and sit down with staff, I won't have a full grasp of everything that's needed. I think that the commissioner has been through that process for the last four years. So she'll have a clear understanding of what's going on at the county level.
Commissioner?
Well, before I ran for commission the first time, I made sure I met with county staff and reviewed the budget and talked about different departments and talked about what our total budget was. So obviously, we just passed our budget for the next fiscal year and there's always gonna be challenges in the years ahead. I mean, especially given the recent COVID pandemic. But obviously, our, our, our priorities need to be public safety and law enforcement. And I'm proud to have the support and endorsement of our sheriff and of our fire department. So obviously, they think that I've done a good job and I've prioritized their needs. So we definitely need to get creative and find ways to, you know, to provide the needed services without asking our taxpayers to pay more. You know, we've had an increase of $6 million, over $6 million in general fund revenues. And, you know, using caution moving forward, I think is, is, is basically the mindset of all of our commission. And, you know, we don't need to fill unfilled positions if, if they're not necessary. And we've, we've done an excellent job. Budget process is a long process, but I think that the county has done an excellent job in, in prioritizing our needs.
Thank you. And one topic you both disagree according to our top, our coverage in Florida today is on the elimination of the Children's Services Council, which in 2018 unsuccessfully sought to put a property tax referendum on the ballot to fund services for at-risk children. Can you explain your views on, on the Children's Services Council? And Commissioner Snardi, I'll let you go first.
This is a long subject for a minute and 30, but it was, it was an entity that existed for over 30 years that did absolutely nothing. It did not provide any services to children, period. The entire commission, and I had concerns about why this board existed because after 30 years, you know, all they were asking for now is a tax hike without a plan. And it would have disproportionately affected only property owners. So everybody would have been allowed to vote on it. And it would have only affected property owners. And we have a lot of seniors on fixed incomes. But, you know, we need a smarter government, not more boards that, that try to manage nonprofits. The nonprofits can manage themselves. You know, I'm a mom, I'm a nurse practitioner and I care deeply about our children. But I understand that nonprofit entities are better able to provide the services the Children's Services Council didn't for 30 years. So it was a unanimous decision by our board, not because we didn't care, but because the language for the ballot was deceptive. And the only thing the Children's Services Council did with some seed money they had was a poll to see which politician could sell the idea. So that should tell you right there that it wasn't, it wasn't with, it wasn't done smartly. So after 30 years, if you're not doing anything, you know, you have to ask yourself, why do you even exist? Because again, they were providing zero service to children.
Mayor Capote?
From my perspective of what I heard is that that board wanted to be able to pass the, get to pass the referendum. That has been one of their missions because in other counties, counties they have. I, I think that the decision was harsh. It could have, could have set down and/or reconfigure a new board. That, there's other ways to, to, to get to the problem. The spending it and, and making it go away is not gonna solve the problem. There's not enough 501(c)(3) organizations out there to handle the volume of the issues. And like I said, philosophy part, government has a certain responsibility to, to their residents. And I think that this board would have served well if it was reconfigured and worked.
Do I get a rebuttal because he talked about the decision we made or no?
Um, I'll give you 30 seconds. We have, we have time. So I'll just keep you, ask you to keep it short.
Well, the Children's Services Council, it's not designed by us, so we could never reconfigure that board. That board is meant, that board has 12 members that are, that are set by the state, a state statute. So we never would have had the opportunity to reconfigure that board, which most of the board, by the way, was unelected. Multi-millions of dollars they bring in with big bureaucracies. And if you did a Google search, you could probably find where money was, has been mismanaged in the past. So that's what, that was all of our issues and that's why it was unanimous.
Okay. So let's move on to a, a different topic, but still on the topic of budget and spending. I want to talk about new taxes. What is your approach to this? When are new taxes necessary? Would you ever be open to approving a new tax? And I'll give you the example of something that has been floated around but never really approved, which is the possibility, say, of gas tax to fund new road construction and improvements. So the question again is, would you ever be open to passing a new tax? And what would be your criteria to make that happen? And I believe Mayor Capote, you're going first on this one.
I think it's just like in the city of Palm Bay. It, it all depends what, what is it gonna be used for? And in the city of Palm Bay, we did the referendum for the roads. So it, and we did it by referendum and we let the voters decide. And overwhelmingly, the, the voters wanted the city to address its needs because we didn't have the money within our general funds to do so. And the county falls kind of like in similar, similar situation when it comes to its infrastructure. And you cannot, like a, a former council member used to say, you can't, not keep, keep kicking the can down the road. You're, you're gonna have to deal with this beast eventual because there's not that much you could continue to attack, attack your general fund. So when it comes to infrastructure, I'm always open to listen.
Commissioner Snardi?
This issue's come up a few times, not just in this forum, but in others as well. As it stands right now, we are not in need of a gas tax. We have been able to reverse the many years of non-committing of infrastructure that has been done by previous commissioners. I'm not saying all commissioners, but, you know, the, the commission went many, many years without taking care of maintaining its roads and infrastructure. We're now finally at the, at the point to now where we're evening out, where we're able to maintain what we have and we're starting full death reclamation and full reconstruction on most of our roads. So we've got an excellent infrastructure plan in place and it's doing its job. It's coming in, again, like I said, I've, I've done over 45 miles in my short time at, at the commission, just in my district alone. So we're catching up slowly but surely and our, we're really excited about it because you have a commission committed to infrastructure, which is something that I don't think that Brevard County has seen. So as long as you've got your, your, your board on board of this, then definitely, we, we definitely don't need to ask our residents to pay more in gas tax.
Yeah. And one topic that comes up in the commission from time to time is a topic of economic incentives. As you know, Brevard County has worked really hard to attract businesses and jobs to our region. Could you explain when are economic incentives such as giving cash or tax abatements to certain companies appropriate? And when should they not be used? And Commissioner Snardi, I'll let you go first.
You know, I think it's great, you know, tax incentives because that was something that the voters approved by over 70%. So overwhelming majority of voters approved tax abatements. I think there's accountability and I'm proud to say that the county has that accountability measure in place where we've got clawback measures that allow us to, you know, revoke that tax abatement if, if they don't live up to the jobs they create. But as far as cash incentives, I am absolutely opposed to. You know, we had Walmart come in and ask for a million or $2 million. And I think it's ridiculous when we're funding billionaires' banks. I mean, I think that's not a value. I don't, you know, I know that they produce jobs, but they don't need the million or two that our residents need here. I think, I think cash incentives are definitely a, a bad idea. I think they can, we, we have a great place. We have a wonderful and inviting work environment. We've got the best weather. We've got great safe communities. We have every reason to have a business, or every reason for a business to wanna be here. So I think handing them hard cold cash, our residents' hard cold cash, is a bad idea.
Mayor Capote?
I would agree with the cash part. I don't, I agree with giving cash. I like the incentivizing of the tax abatement. That's what we've done here in the city. And that's what the EDC does. And, and that's what they bring forth to the different municipalities and even the county when we get ready to try to bring a company into the area, just like Northern Grumman, just like other companies, Embraer that's coming to Melbourne. So there's always a way to keep the companies in check. They wanna come into. If they meet their milestones, then they get the incentivized tax break within their structure. I think that when it comes to that, we've had good stewards within the county, the EDC and even the city and even the state of Florida in trying to bring development into this area. So I feel fine about the tax abatement, tax incentive. That's a, that's a whole other league. And I don't, I wouldn't agree with that.
Thank you. And one more budget question before we move on. I wanna make sure we cover the, the Indian River Lagoon as well. Last year, the county commission voted four to one to raise a voter-approved cap on the revenue increase from one component of the Brevard County Sheriff's Office budget without seeing a detailed budget for the agency first. Sheriff, you requested to fund what he called critical needs within his agency. And by the way, that was for the 2019, 2020 budget, not the current budget, by the way. Commissioner Snardi, could you please explain why you voted for that? And Mayor Capote, please explain how you would have voted. Mayor Capote, we'll begin with you.
I mean, I would have to see the product in regards. I'm not just gonna approve something without understanding what total needs are. Everybody makes a decision on their votes, just like we do here in the city of Palm Bay. I don't agree, you know, I don't agree with signing a blank check. Unless you explain to me and to the voters why exactly you need that money, I, I would not feel comfortable in, in voting your way. So that would have been my understanding. If you can convince me that these, this is, and tell me detail of why you need this money. So I could go to my supporters and say, hey, I supported the sheriff on this because of this, this and that. But if you're not able to show me why, then it's not something I could support.
Commissioner Snardi?
I'm not sure, like, how the media handled the coverage of, about having line item versus detailed budget. But I met with their budget director twice just on this alone. And I met him, with him again twice this year when there wasn't even an ask of an increase. You know, I saw the detailed budget. I, I offered it even at a meeting. I think I held it up and said, anybody that wants it. I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but I think our sheriff has done an excellent job keeping our community safe. And this is a public safety issue. I think, you know, to, to say that someone signed a blank check, I mean, that's a lot ridiculous. I mean, no one signed a blank check. We knew exactly what his budget was. Our sheriff is doing a great job keeping our community safe and he's accountable to his voters as well. If people don't like the job he's doing, you know, they can take it to the ballot, ballot box. He's a constitutional officer and he had a, he had a need. And he, he made his case in my office more than once and I reviewed that budget with him and asked a lot of questions. And so at, at the time, that was the best decision to make sure that we had enough deputies on the road and to make sure that we could continue to keep our residents safe. So to say that, you know, anybody signed a blank check is just ridiculous.
Can I say something?
Yes, 30 seconds.
Okay. It's real quick. If, if that is so, then I know there's been public records requests in regards to the line items and everything that, that the sheriff needed the money for. There's been public workers' requests for that information and it hasn't been released.
Am I to respond or?
I'll give you, I'll give you 20 seconds. How's that?
I was gonna say, I, I, I don't work for the sheriff and the sheriff is a constitutional officer. If he's not responding to public records requests, I, I can't help that. I can't, I can't force him to do that. I know he presented his budget to the commission and he also presented it in my office. So I mean, I have no control over the sheriff being an elected member.
All right, thank you. So let's move on. Like I said, I wanted to make sure we talk about the lagoon. We have roughly 11 minutes left before the end of this forum. And this question is actually from our environmental reporter, Tim Wayman, who has been following very closely what's happening in the lagoon. So four years after, four years after voters approved a Hessen sales tax to clean up the lagoon, the estuary has recently shown signs of yet another chronic algae bloom. What do you think of the progress so far on this Save Our Lagoon Hessen sales tax plan? And do you think the money is being spent on the right things? Or do you think the county needs to shift the spending in a different direction? And Commissioner, I'll let you go first.
Yes, I think we've done a great job. We have an oversight committee that, you know, goes through each project to make sure that our, we're moving enough nutrients to make sure that it's, it's a smart expenditure of cash. I know that we sometimes can't control what happens, you know, and with our environment. And now we're trying to make up for decades of just neglect. So I think, you know, one of the things I pushed for on the commission was septic to sewer. I mean, we're getting people off of septic systems. We're putting in projects that, that require, you know, people to use the higher, you know, septic system so they're not putting that nutrient load in any of our water. You know, we, we have to make sure we expand our sewer. That's now part of the plan. So I think we're doing a great job as far as oversight, as far as prioritizing our, the allocation of funds. And we need to just make sure we, we keep up with the experts and the scientists to make sure that we're spending that money properly. It's just taxpayer money. So ultimately, we wanna make sure that we're, we're getting the best bang for our buck. But it's gonna be a long process. The lagoon has had many, many years of neglect, so.
Mayor Capote?
Okay. Now, you know, I'm, I'm listening to the commissioner talk about the septic. That is something that I was talking about back when we were on council together. And then, and then Norton's came, so a resolution came before us in regards to supporting the, the fertilizer. And I thought that they were going after the low-hanging fruit and, and not addressing the real issue was the septic. And this goes way back when this discussion was, was being had, what's happening. And I was making the argument here in the city of Palm Bay to the county about septic. What is it that we're gonna do about the septic? And it kind of fell in deaf ears back then. And we're talking at least a decade now of, of that discussion. So the lagoon is, is, is one of our treasures. We need to do the relatively, all the, all the good things to make it come back and, and, and make it, make it right. And we could do that little by little and, and, and listen to the experts. And the Space Coast League of City has been fighting on this to try, to try to get to, to have this heard and understand, and understand that the lagoon is, is one of our assets.
Thank you. And you both brought up septic tanks. So my next question is about that topic. Do you support new developments in Brevard County that have conventional septic systems? Or do you think there should be a requirement for all new developments to have upgraded septic systems or sewer line hookups? Commissioner Snardi, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, we're actually already doing that, especially if they're within so many miles of the shoreline or the lagoon or any body of water. We definitely, we've already put those, those rules in place. So any development that comes before us, you know, we, we definitely want them to, to do sewer. And we have something on our agenda tonight that, that addresses that. So I think all of commission is, has made that a priority. And, you know, it should be a priority because it's not just the lagoon. It's our drinking water. It's other bodies of water. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we're, we're taking care of all of it.
Mayor?
And I would stress the same thing because we've done it here in the city. So I totally agree with what the commissioner is saying because we have to address this as quickly as possible. We should have addressed it 10 years ago. I know we're having this conversations now, but that was, if you go back to the city council meetings of then, I was making that argument that the fertilizer was just a little piece of the issue. The bigger issue was the septic system and the septic system that were closer to the Indian River Lagoon and we needed to address that.
Thank you. And I wanted, I wanted voters to get to, get to know you more on a personal level and about your, your political career. So as we stated before, you have both been in elective office for eight years. I wanna know what were your biggest accomplishments and your biggest regrets, regrets? And please be honest about your regrets. A lot of times candidates skip that part. So at least, if we're both, if we're all doing that, I think it's fair to, to both- So if we're both, if we're all doing that, I think it's fair to to both sides. And Mayor Capote, you go first.
The junior job program here in the city for the kids, assisting Florida, Florida Institute Technology and securing 1.4 million dollar grant to construct the Advanced Manufacturing Innovation Center, Catman, here in the city. Getting Home Rule, getting awarded the Home Rule for supporting Home Rule. Being the former president of the league, helping achieve getting Bass Pro into the community. Being on the board of directors of the Florida League of Cities, championing the Heritage Parkway on the south, the exit and the development that is coming, incoming in that area and raising over $40,000 for the Certified Production Technician Program for Eastern Florida State College in the EDC.
Commissioners Snardy.
Well, I didn't write down a list of all the stuff I I did, so I can't read it to you. All I can say is that I've been an advocate from the beginning for families. I'm proud of the work we've done for seniors. We were able to just, you know, in the last couple of years, I'll start there. We were able to increase parent transport services that helps, you know, people, not just for seniors, but for any disabled individual to get to their appointments, to run necessary errands. I mean, it was, it was a service that, you know, we didn't really hear about, and we didn't really brag about. We were able to get our board to support that. We increased bus routes to allow kids, you know, that work at heritage or that go to heritage to be able to do extracurricular activities after school because buses were only running till school got out. So those are the things you often don't get headlines for. But, you know, every day, we're able to help residents. Every day, we're doing things that change people's lives. And that's the stuff I think I'm most proud of. It's the stuff that you don't read about in the headlines. Of course, we've done big things. I can talk about that big $45 million number in roads, talk about the million and a half in drainage and all the boring stuff that that you may notice or you may read about. But it's it's the touching people every day and being able to help people with code enforcement issue, to help people with their trash, to help people with, you know, to get connected with our bus routes or to help people, you know, to get food if they need food. But meals on wheels, a pretty proud accomplishment. I was able to get that in our budget because I saw the value of what that brought to our community and the return on investment to our seniors, so.
And I asked you both about regrets and neither answered that, so.
Business, you cannot have regrets. Politics is not about regrets. You take the good with the bad. You you're not going to make everybody happy. So at the end of the day, understand that politics comes with that. And I have no regrets.
Okay.
I would say my only regret, I guess, is not getting sometimes the message out like like you would like to, like not always, you know, being the one to reach out and to say, hey, this is what we're accomplishing. And it's not because I want to brag, but it's just because I want people to know that I am working hard. I am somebody that they gave faith in and their vote to, and and they want them to work hard. And sometimes I have a hard time tooting my own horn. But we've done a lot in our district, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done.
Okay, and Mayor Capote, just, I'm going to press him about the issues with the, with the 95 interchange. Is that something that you feel the city could have handled, I'm sorry, could have handled differently? And the delays with that and all the, all the, the issues that arose?
I mean, there's a lot of interest to see to that. And and the reality is, things happen when they're supposed to. You could start pointing fingers on who did what, but the reality is, is here. It's now and development is coming. That's why I say you can't, you can't live on the regrets part because you can't change it. You can't change what happened. Would I have loved the interchange to come in or the Parkway portion of it to come in a lot sooner? Yes, yes, it would have, it would have been something that I would have appreciated, but it didn't. But now we're here.
And we only have a couple of minutes left. I'm going to ask you to wrap up with your closing statement, and I I'm going to have to give you only a minute to do that. Commissioner Snardy, if you want to go first.
I'll just say that I've been proud to serve as your county commissioner for nearly the last four years. And I'd be honored to earn your vote once again. Obviously, in these tough times, we need real leadership that isn't afraid to stand up for what's right. It's not always easy, but sometimes it's hard to do the right thing. And I'm not afraid to take on special interests and fight against, you know, tax and fee increases that hurt families. I stand with law enforcement and our sheriff, and I want to keep our community safe. And I'll work hard, I'll continue to work hard to keep our our community safe, to create jobs and to protect our water. And I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd. And I have an open door. If anybody wants a meeting or call, I'm available anytime.
Thank you, Mayor Capote.
We close and is a November 3rd. You you have two choices. The reality is, if if you feel that the current direction that the county is going, District 5 is going and the whole county, then Christine is your commissioner, it's Nardi is your person. But if you're looking for something else, I'm your guy. And I know what I bring to the table because I've brought it to Palm Bay. A passion, a dedication, a person that tries to work hard, tries not to have a lot of regrets in life because that's not going to solve any problems. And I don't, I don't go around tooting my own horn. I just happened to be asked a question, and I happen to have the answers. So at the end of the day, is is again, I go, it's two different, two, two different styles of leadership. And which one is the one you'd rather have?
Yeah, William Capote, Christine Snardy, thank you once again for being with us and doing this for the voters. And for the voters, the county commission District 5 will be on the November ballot. And make sure you do your homework and that you vote. And thanks for joining us.